The Suffolk City School Board will now come to order. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Aleah Copeland.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We will now have the certification of the closed meeting by the clerk, Mrs. Chavis.
Resolution of the certification of the closed... A resolution of the certification of the closed meeting on March 20th, 2017 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
So moved.
Board member Bichard?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland? Excuse me, Vice Chairman Byrom?
Yes.
Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We will now have the presentation, recognition of honor graduates, Dr. Whitney.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to our podium Ms. Beth Ann Bradshaw, our Public Information Officer. Ms. Bradshaw.
Good evening. Each month we take this opportunity to share with you and our viewing audience at home some of the great things that are happening in our schools each and every day and some of the wonderful accomplishments of both our students and our staff. So you know that it's this time of year when we're getting close to graduation and the school board changes its three next month's meetings to better accommodate the longstanding tradition of recognizing each high school's honor graduates. So tonight we're here from Lakeland High School where we'll be recognizing the honor graduates from the Cavalier class of 2018. In April, the school board will be meeting at Kingsport High School and in May, the board will be held meeting will be held at Nanceman River High School. I would now like to invite Lakeland Principal Douglas Wagner to start the introductions of tonight's honored guest. We've asked each student to introduce their parents, their parents to stand, for the student to then share their college and career plans and tell us about their fondest memory while a student in Suffolk Public Schools. Mr. Wagner.
Good evening Chairman Copeland, Vice Chairman Byrom, Dr. Whitney, members of the board. Good evening, my name is Doug Wagner. I am principal here at Lakeland High School. I would first like to welcome you to Lakeland and extend our thanks not only for providing us this opportunity to introduce to you our honor graduates, but also for holding the meeting here at Lakeland High School. This is one of the sweetest occasions that a building principal, at least at the high school level, can have. When we step back for a moment and recognize and appreciate the dedication of our students whose consistent academic success has led them to this point. Not only do the young people that you are about to meet demonstrate success in their schooling, but many also participate in numerous other co- and extracurricular school activities. They are members of the workforce, provide volunteer service to the community in excess of what we require for graduation, present themselves as respectful and compassionate individuals, and demonstrate the school spirit of a true Cavalier. To present you, or excuse me, to present to you the honor graduates of Lakeland High School, class of 2018, with additional comments, I will now call on Ms. Sheila Williams, our senior class guidance counselor for Lakeland High School.
Good evening, Dr. Whitney, Chairperson Copeland, all school board members, parents, friends, and of course, the class of 2018. It is my pleasure and my honor to introduce our honor graduates of the Lakeland High School 2018 class of Lakeland High School, excuse me. I am very excited and very proud of all of our students. These students are well-accomplished. We are actually having our first graduation class of our biomedical program, so we are very excited and proud of those students as well. This is also a very personal thing for me because my daughter is also a member of the honor graduates of the class of 2018. So without further ado, I would like to introduce to you the class of 2018 honor graduates.
Howdy, y'all. My name is Cody Anderson. My parents are John and Kathy Anderson. I will be attending Pitt Community College in North Carolina to study, to become a medical dosimetrist. And my fondest memory of Lakeland High School was the night that our baseball team beat the Oscar Smith baseball team away my sophomore year.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Maya. I'm part of the biomedical program. My parents are Gerald and Adrian Anderson. I will be attending Radford University in the fall to do pediatric nursing. And my fondest memory in Suffolk Public Schools, I would have to say, was my first homecoming game as a freshman.
Good evening. My name is Jermaine Eliza Austin and I am also a member of the biomedical program. My parents are Jerome and Demetrius Austin and I'm currently undecided on where I'm attending university. But where I do attend, I plan to major in biochemistry or molecular biology. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is prom of 2017.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Baines. My parents are Susan and Keith Baines. I plan to attend Virginia Tech to major in biology on a pre-vet track. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is the friends and memories I have made through the biomedical program.
Good evening. My name is Justin Baker. My parents are Elizabeth Jones and Matthew Baker. My future plans are yet to be decided. And my fondest memory of Lakeland High School is probably taking ROTC class.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Colin Bales and I'm actually going to go to VCU for the chemistry and I'm actually going to be doing the pre-pharmacy track. My career, oh, my fondest memory in general for like Suffolk Public Schools is actually my fifth grade year because I actually became a Boy Scout, also because that was the time I realized that I was going to be in middle school for the following year. Thank you.
Your parents? Your parents? Your parents? Your parents? Your parents?
My parents are Diana and Patrick Bales.
Good evening. My name is Tiana Barnes. My parents are Tamika Barnes Gatlin, Deion Gatlin, and Andre Porter. I plan to attend Norfolk State University and major in psychology. My most fondest moment of Suffolk Public School happened October 7th when I performed my last band competition and we received first place.
Good evening. My name is Shalonda Beaman. My parents are David Beaman and Curly Beaman. I plan to attend Virginia State University to major in biology. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public School was my last homecoming.
I'm Josh Bennett. My parents are Ray and Lori Bennett. Oh, yeah. I plan to attend ODU, major in construction engineering. My fondest moment of Suffolk Public Schools was this past fall, was during volleyball season where we beat Deep Creek to advance to state, which was the first team in Lakeland history to do that.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Benton. My parents are Alvin and Felicia Wilson II. My career goals are to attend Virginia State University and major in criminal law and justice. And my fondest moment of Lakeland High School was being a majorette and being a part of the Marching Quiet Storm Band.
Good evening. My name is Tatiana Blakely. My parents are Keisha and Antonio Spivey. I am yet undecided about where I'd like to go to college, but when I do go, I plan to major in biochemistry to become a medical researcher. And my fondest memories of Suffolk Public Schools is going to the state leadership conference with the student council every year.
Good evening. My name is Quanaja Bowden. My parents are Lisa Robinson and Alonso Bowden. I plan to join the Navy and my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is winning homecoming
Hi. My name's Autumn Branch, like the season in the tree branch. My parents are Beth and Craig Branch. I'm currently undecided on college, either George or James Madison, George Mason. And I am undecided on what I'm going to major in. And my fondest memory is breaking my arm, fourth grade year, on field day. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Brown. My parents are Paul and Michelle Brown. I'm undecided on where I want to go, but I do want to get my master's in early childhood education. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is meeting new people and creating
Good morning. My name is Cameron Callender. My parents are Cassandra Callender and Michael Fitzgerald. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm a little flustered. I don't really know where I plan to attend this fall, but I want to major in biomedical engineering. And, um, yeah, my fondest memory is meeting all of the wonderful people at Lakeland High School.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Carr, but everyone here calls me Maddie. My parents are Morris and Melissa Carr. I plan to attend Longwood University in the fall to take part in the Cormier Honors College and to take part in their therapeutic recreation program so I can go on the track of becoming a recreational therapist. My fondest memory of Lakeland was pretty hard to choose because I'm on sports teams and clubs, but it was to win homecoming queen this past fall.
Good evening. My name is Aleah Copeland. My parents are Audrey and Christopher Copeland, Sr. I plan to attend James Madison University and major in nursing to eventually become a pediatric nurse practitioner. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools was when I was accepted into the biomedical sciences program and I met my lifelong friends that I would later call my second family.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Copeland and my parent is Jason Copeland. My college career is currently undecided, but I do want to become a mortician. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is being a part of the orchestra for nearly seven years.
Good evening. My name is Latasha Council. My parents are Latasha Spratley and Kimining Council. I plan to attend Tiger Water Community College and start my career as a radiologist. One of my fondest memories of Suffolk Public Schools is being able to learn more and more
Good evening. My name is Tyler Edwards. My parents are Jennifer and Thomas Edwards. I plan to attend George Mason University where I want to major in computer science. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools would have to be growing up and graduating with all the people I met in elementary school.
Good evening. My name is Holly Ellis. My parents are Michael and Janice Ellis. I plan to attend Virginia Commonwealth University to study graphic design. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools was being able to grow up with the same friends since Southwestern.
My name is Dejore Michael Falk. I am the son of Michael and Joanne Falk. I plan on attending George Mason University to major in computer science to become a computer research scientist. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is graduating with all my friends
Good evening. My name is Maya Felt. My parents are Philip and Stacy Felt. I plan on attending Lynchburg College to study biochemistry and my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools was my senior homecoming week.
Good evening. My name is Tajra Futro. My mother is Catherine Douglas. I plan to attend Tiger Water Community College to become a social worker. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is all the lifelong friends I've made along the way.
Hi. My name is Noah Green. My parents are Dina and Paul Green. I plan to attend UVA and major in biology to later on get my MD and become an obstetrician and gynecologist. My fondest memory at Suffolk Public Schools has to be two teachers, Ms. McDonald and Ms. Cobb. They, chances are, I wouldn't be standing here today talking to you without them.
Evening. My name is Robert Wyatt Gross. My parents are Robert and Lacy Gross. After high school, I plan to either attend the University of Alabama or Virginia Tech or possibly accept a job offer from the Republican Party of Virginia.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Hespel. And my father and my mother is Mrs. Mrs. Hespel. I to do, to work at a hair salon and I like hanging out with my friends.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Huffman. My parents are Daniel and Wendy Huffman. After graduation, I plan to attend Virginia Commonwealth University to major in nursing. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is being a part of the Marching Quiet Storm Band as a Blue Diamond dancer.
Good evening. My name is Destiny Ingram and my parents are Omar Ingram and Nan Marie. I'm after college, I mean, after high school, I plan to, plan to attend Virginia State and major in biology. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public School was joining Lakeland High School Marching Quiet Storm Band as a dancing sapphire majorette.
Good evening. My name is Tessa Johnson. My parents are Rebecca Jones and Jake Johnson. I plan to attend Radford University and major in nursing. My fondest memory would have to be all the lifelong friendships that I've made in the biomedical program.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Kelly. My parents are Tim Kelly and Michelle Depoe. After high school, I plan to either attend George Mason University or Virginia Commonwealth University. I plan to major in computer engineering. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is breaking my arm on the first day of kindergarten, subsequently, my first day of Suffolk Public Schools.
Good evening. My name is Alex Kenzie. My parents are Bobby and Dana Kenzie. In the fall, I plan to attend Virginia Tech to major in animal and poultry sciences. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is joining the biomedical program and playing field hockey.
Hi. My name is Sierra Lee. My parents are Vanessa and Christopher Lee. After high school, I plan to attend Norfolk State University and major in criminal justice, one day hoping to extend my education at a law school and be a criminal justice attorney. My fondest memory at Suffolk Public Schools is running for homecoming and participating in my last pep rally.
Good evening. My name is Deonja Little. My parents are Stuart and Jamesy Little. After high school, I plan to attend Hampton University and major in engineering. My fondest memory at Suffolk Public Schools is winning homecoming king.
Good evening. My name is Kyla Manley. My parents are Ashawn and Anitra Manley. In the fall, I plan to attend Old Dominion University to major in information technology to become a security administrator. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools would have to be in second grade at Southwestern. Me and Aleah Copeland were the only two females to attain principals list, which is basically all As throughout the whole year.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Matthews. My parents are Lessin Layer Matthews. I plan to attend Methodist University and major in forensic science. And my fondest memory is being a part of the biomed family.
Good afternoon. I'm Sharbria McDonald. My parents are Clifford and Charlotte McDonald. I plan to attend Clark Atlanta University and study criminal justice. My fondest memory of Lakeland was joining the Lady Cavs tennis team.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Miller. My parent is Wayne Miller. I'm planning on attending Old Dominion University for computer engineering. My fondest memory at Suffolk Public Schools is more than likely all the new friendships that I made when I transferred here my junior year.
Good evening. My name is DeMonte Naseem Moore. I plan on going to Radford University to study physical therapy. My mother is Nikila Falk. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is creating a big family with the Cavaliers
Good evening. My name is Abigail Neal. My parents are Kevin and April Neal. After high school, I plan on attending Paul D camp to continue for nursing. Right now, I'm in a medical administration class. And my fondest memory in Suffolk Public Schools is being able to be an honors graduate after facing many difficulties in 10th grade.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Ordigo. My parents are Dawn and Suzie Foose. I plan to join the United States Coast Guard to become an intelligence specialist. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools has got to be making friends throughout
Hi. My name is Emily Owen. My parents are Larry and Angie Owen. I plan to attend Tiger Water Community College to get a degree in early childhood development. And my fondest moment of Suffolk Public Schools was winning a bike for my private attendance in third grade.
Good evening, Mo. My name is Kristiny Ponton. My parents are Christopher and Charlotte Ponton. When I graduate from high school, I would like to attend Old Dominion University and get a career in computer modeling and simulation. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools would be of all the teachers that I've had throughout the years and the light that they instilled in me to succeed in all that I do.
Good evening. My name is Yasmin Prozise. My parents are James and Valerie Prozise. When I graduate, I plan to attend the University of Mary Washington. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools was a field trip we took to the symphony in the fifth grade, which was one of the first field trips I had at Suffolk Public
My name is Hunter Rawls. I go to Lakeland High School and my parents is Lisa and Reggie Rawls. I'm going to go to East Carolina and study engineering and my fondest memory is going to be when I walk across the stage on graduation.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Brianna Roundtree. My parents are Bryant and Nicole Roundtree. My career plans is to attend North Carolina A&amp;T and major in psychology and get my doctorate in forensic psychology. My fondest memory in Suffolk Public Schools is cheering at Lakeland High School.
Hello. My name is Megan Simpson and my parents are Mike and Lori Simpson. After high school, I plan to attend Lynchburg College to major in education. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is my senior homecoming game.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Stevens. My parents are John and Marnie Stevens. I will be attending TCC to become an ultrasound tech. And my fondest memory at Suffolk Public Schools is when Tessa and I had a singing competition in first grade.
Good evening. My name is Jakita Stewart and my mother's name is Lorena Stewart. I plan on attending Old Dominion University to study human services. And my fondest memory in Suffolk Public Schools is managing to get the highest AR score through our elementary school and middle school.
Hi. My name is Brené Shuklin. My parents are Kelly and Sunny Shuklin. I plan to attend ODU, Old Dominion University, and study nursing. And then my greatest, fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools would be joining biomedical.
Good evening. My name is Autumn Thompson. My parents are Evie and Jason Thompson. In the fall, I plan to go to Burkina Faso, West Africa to be a missionary. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is leading a Christian club of students called First Priority at Forest Glen Middle School.
Hello. My name is Tyler Treat. My parents are Todd and Candy Treat. I'm planning to attend Paul D baseball for criminal justice. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools will be joining the baseball team and having all the friendships through that.
Good evening. My name is Hunter Turley. My parents are Crystal and Michael Turley. After high school, I planned to join the United States Air Force. And my fondest moment of Suffolk Public Schools has to be being a part of the ROTC
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Walker and my parents are Michael and Jennifer Walker. I plan to become a pediatric nurse. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is having Mr. Earl Jones as my US Good evening. My name is Teal Wells. My parents are Tracy and Johnny Wells. I plan to attend North Carolina A&amp;T State University and major in music. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is joining the Lakeland High School Marching Quiet Storm Band.
Good evening. My name is Mia Williams. My parents are Carlton and Sheila Williams. I plan to attend Virginia State University and major in business education. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools has to be all the fun field trips that I went on in elementary school. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Tere Williams. My parents is Kiyla and Renee Williams. And my future plans after high school is to attend Old Dominion University and major in computer science and start my career in cybersecurity. And my fondest memory of Suffolk Public School is having counselors like Ms. Williams and Ms. Edwards to help me through the college process.
Good evening. My name is Brean Wolf. My parents are Benny and Shannon Wolf. I plan to attend Old Dominion University and major in, I forgot. Okay. Major in leadership, there we go. And my fondest memory would have to be the ability to obtain my associate's degree in high school.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Trinity Elise Woodson and my parents are Dana and Willie Woodson over to the right. After graduating from Lakeland High School, I will be attending Hampton University and majoring in political science. And after graduating from Hampton, I plan to attend the law school of my choosing and becoming a civil rights attorney. And I would have to say that my fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools would be when I was a student ambassador at Kingsport Middle. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alton Worley. My parents are Alton and Candace Worley. I plan to attend Hampton University and major in journalism. My fondest memory at Suffolk Public Schools is being accepted as a new kid on the block my fifth grade year when I transferred here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Wright and my mother is Jennifer Atkinson. I plan on going to Christopher Newport and get my degree in accounting. My fondest memory of Suffolk Public Schools is being the only one in my class to play varsity soccer all four years.
If I could start off comments first, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Wagner and Ms. Williams for having such an excellent attendance of your honor graduates this evening. I know that probably wasn't easy to get them all here, but thank you. Can I see the biomedical science students because they raised their hands? I would just like to congratulate you. I don't know if you remember back when you were freshmen in November 2014? you. I don't know if you remember back when you were freshmen in November 2014, I came into your class and you were doing one of your first presentations. And you were all so shy and afraid to speak. But tonight, you've blossomed and I, you know, I hope Ms. McDonald had a part in that, but you guys are doing great. Very proud of you for being the pioneers that you are. And I wish you well. I wish all the honor graduates well. And I thank you for all the hard work and commitment that you've put into your school. Lakeland is much better for you having been here. And I'm going to ask you to do one thing for me. If we could have all the parents rise and if I could ask the honor graduates to give your parents a round of applause, please.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say something too.
Me too.
Okay, mine will be short. Well, first of all, ditto what he, what Mr. Mitnick said so that I won't waste your time. But if it hadn't have been for Latin, I wouldn't even have a clue what a dosimeter is. So I was wondering if Cody, if you could tell me, does that mean to measure the dosage of medicine? What is that? I'm sorry, I've just never heard of that.
I see, I picked a good career then, I reckon.
You sure did.
To the extent of my knowledge, my aunt, she does that for a living, so she's kind of given me a little bit of insight on it. And she, what she does is she takes the x-ray photographs of people's body parts that have tumors and cancers in it. And she determines how much radiation they will receive to the organ.
Well, that is absolutely amazing because, well, it does mean to measure the medicine then, doesn't it?
I think so.
Anyway, that sounds like a very exciting career. And thank you for helping me with that. And I also wanted to ask the one person that I saw as going into education, I just wanted to ask you if you would please consider applying to Suffolk Public Schools because we need you. Thank you, congratulations.
I'd like to say congratulations to the entire class and Hunter, our Rawls. We will be just as excited as you are when you go across that stage tonight.
I'd like to say congratulations to you. This is probably my favorite time of year looking at students who finished and are ready to start their lives. Congratulations to all of you for what you've done. I'd like to give a special, I guess, shout out to those persons who are joining the military and from a military family. So those persons who are going to serve their countries, I am very, very, very proud of you, all of you, but especially that group, the missionary that we have. You have a wonderful career and I know it's going to be productive. The other thing I'd like to say is I taught at Hampton University and Virginia State University. I recently retired from there. So I wish you well. And if you get a chance after this is over, I'd like to talk to you for a minute. And then, the North Carolina A&amp;T persons who are there. I went to Bennett College, which is a block away from A&amp;T. So I spent a lot of time on that campus. Congratulations to all of you. And I am a graduate of UVA also. So to my UVA person, wah-oo-ah.
And Megan Simpson, I'd just like to remind you, the Suffolk Education Foundation has a Future Educator Scholarship. And I hope we'll see your application when they're due on the 28th of March.
In the nine years I've been on the board, I've never seen a better class than this in Lakeland High School. I'd like to congratulate all of you for your efforts, parents and teachers for helping along. But this is the best class I've seen in the last nine years. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you.
By the way, that is spoken from a former principal of Lakeland High School. He was one of the first principals. He was the first principal of Lakeland.
I'd just like to say ditto to what fellow board members have said. But it really warms my heart to see all these young people and the future that we have in store for us. Your plans are magnificent and you just look so nice sitting there. I hope there are a lot of pictures taken tonight so that we can capture this. But I do remember a lot of you from Robertson Elementary School, Southwestern you mentioned. And you go back a long ways and you sure have grown up to be a nice looking young group of people. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
I too like to commend this class. As has been stated, I'm very impressed with you, to be honest with you, because you have really impressed, I would say, everybody here tonight. I was very impressed with the numbers. You came in, you addressed yourselves and you addressed your parents and you addressed us quite well. I know a few of you. And it's just amazing to see how you've grown up and become young men and young women. Cody, I read about you. I hate to pick on you, but I love baseball, so I have read about you in baseball. I want you to know that. So. So I'd like to thank all of you and particularly the parents. The parents, again, we'd like to give you a round of applause for coming out and representing Lakeland High School the way you have done. Thank you very much.